Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the October 7th, 2025 meeting of the Pownell Planning Commission. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and we'll start with a board member roll call.
Tim Winchester.
Brad Miller.
Casey Boxer.
Brian Harris.
David Powell.
And we're gonna go for approval of agenda. Our agenda is to approve minutes for September 16th. We're gonna have a visit and some, maybe some questions with Nelson and Cindy Brownell. Then we're gonna set our next meeting agenda items, go to public comment, adjourn, adjourn. So I don't entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Rule of minutes for September 16th.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, that brings us to our main agenda item, uh, visit with Cindy and Nelson Brownell. What we're, what we're doing is we're, we're, we're working on revising the town plan. And we noticed that there was very little information about the school in the town plan. And we're looking to maybe include more in-depth information on, on the school regarding the school and, and the value it is to the community. And we may wish to add, add a little bit about the history of the school and the value it provides for the community. And as it is now, and as well as the foreseeable future. And you know, part of this is, you know, the town plan, we, we see it as providing important information for potential businesses that might want to come into town, as, as well as new residents that might want to come into town. Uh, we'd like to ensure we can confidently speak about the school as an asset to the town. And we know that since the school was transferred from the town to the, to the merged district of the, as a result of the Act 46 mergers, there may be some uncertainty as to the school continuing operations and serving the community as it was built to do. We know that since the merger, the legislature has followed with a few more acts, all intended to fix failures of Act 46. I don't know if that's a correct assessment or not, but, um, and, and some of the other acts. The concern is that over time, the fate of our school and any interest the town may have in the asset could be lost in the, in the weeds. So, you know, questions that I might have would be, well, first I guess I'll ask you if you have any, any, anything you comments, uh?
Well, I, the school is, it's a very important building for the, for the town.
You're right.
A lot of people come here and they, they look at the school. Um, it's been there for many years. Unfortunately, I wasn't here when they had the school in North Pownell, but then this one was built.
Right.
I served on it for 24 years.
Twenty-four years.
And every year we asked the town for extra money to replace all the windows and the doors. We've put a lot of money into the building and, um, it's just an important part of the community. They are, um, it's Act 73 they're going into now. They're trying to work on and establish something to lower the taxes. So they're basically, they want to move the, um, it isn't, it isn't set in stonia, but I guess talk has been about, um, not closing our school, but we're trying to move, uh, grades together. So I'm definitely against them trying to take our, our children and boss them to bed.
Right, right.
Especially the younger ones because it's not good.
Right.
Want to add anything?
Yeah, I was trying to get something open, but I don't have, yes, we're good on website. I know, assuming you don't want to give it to me. Yeah. That's, uh, I was gonna bring up, and I'll share, I'll send this to you later. But I have both the proposal for the redistricting, the first proposal is supposed to come up with three and give them to the legislature, which will be more than likely the education committees for both the senate and the house will get this proposal. There was a number of things within 70, Act 73, which I was gonna, you know, that basically lets you, uh, tell you what they're working on to try and do this. So far they've come up with 14 districts and they put them around career tech centers, which falls more into where I sit with the, what I said, Ron. Uh, and basically they're looking to, uh, in some way reduce the number of supervisory unions through that process.
Right.
And if they do what I just read today, end up with only 14 districts in the whole state, which is this proposal, which combines the tech centers and the high schools and stuff. So basically, uh, that's one of that. But the key, I think, that people forget, and I used to hear this a lot when I was upstate, and I was one of them saying it too. A school is the community center. And if you take a school out of a community, you've tore the heart out of that community.
Right.
Okay, so that you need to keep these schools and they need to find a way, they need, I just let you. The communities can do that. It doesn't mean that some, some schools won't be gone the way they were. I mean, I mean, there's schools out there with less than 19, in fact, less than 10 students. But, and if the school's closed, then maybe they should work. But the bottom line is, is that schools are barriers that has a larger population as it does and probably growing population if we get more people moving in. Uh, and it is a community center. It's also an attraction, as you said earlier, for businesses and so forth. Based on how your school is and how it's ranked in the state makes a big difference when people look. Cause they're looking for a couple of things. They're looking for a quiet community. They're looking for good schools and they're looking for jobs.
Right, yeah.
Those are the things that they're looking for. Uh, we're not that far from jobs. As most of you know, I can either try for 46 years. So, so there, there's good jobs within a close proximity to Pownell, Pownell meets that growing in it. Uh, and I think we see some of that even now with Williamstown. People that work there are now moving to our community building houses. So we've got to keep that strong. And the way to keep that strong is to keep school.
Right.
And I think that's where it is. Uh, they want to expand the tech centers, which Bennington has one, which covered our high school kids at all. And if they do that and expand on that, that's another attraction for our community, for children that needs to find careers other than college.
Yeah.
You know, college is so expensive today and if you listen to a lot of the kids that come out, they can't even find a job in the field that they went to where if you look at the trades, I mean, you can't find plumbers, electricians or any of these people anymore. So, so there's a lot of them. Those people are always looking for helpers and they can't find them.
Right.
So I think we're in the right spot for that sort of, for, uh, when it comes to schools. Now, the other thing that I've seen is our school was inspected for, um, wasn't PCPs, whatever they've gotten.
Yeah, for range.
Yeah, for range.
And we were, we were okay.
Yeah.
We're not in the point where they gotta tear down the school and do any of that. That passed okay. And our, our board.
What about asbestos? Is there any of that in there?
If, if anything was in there, it was low enough on account. So before what I saw was whether or not they needed to tear down a school and that. And I wasn't one of those.
We tried to keep that building up. Like you said, we asked the taxpayers every year that we went in and tried to do everything we could from bottom up.
What, what they might need is, uh, a new meeting system, maybe, things of that nature. And so, um, but other than that, the school is in pretty good shape and, uh, you know, and, and it's, it's not so, uh, it's not located in a place where it's at risk for them.
Right.
You know, which is another good. You know, so I think, uh, I think overall, uh, from the planning side of things is that the goal should be to use the community, schools as a community asset.
Right.
Make sure it's clear that that's what it is and that the community grows on their building. And then the, unfortunately, the rest is gonna be left up to this decision. Although this group is, I'll try to send you the names of who's on, I know who's on the, our supervisors, um, that's coming up with the districts and then for what they're separating up things. So I didn't hear anything coming from that direction that says they would okay, they were to Bennington or Pownell or any, any of the schools.
Right.
Most of the state, I think, is they're, they're concerned with the, the best thing that they could do, and I said to that before they switched to Act 46, is join the superintendents, the central offices. They don't, they don't need as many as they have.
Right.
They would save more money than.
And that's, well, that's part of what this study is. That's a redistricting is doing just that. Uh, so, so that'll work out.
And I think it's important they look at it because our taxes are going crazy. And they, they have to look at something to, to reduce it.
So at this point though, our school isn't being targeted or considered for closure?
Nothing. No, I haven't heard.
And besides, if that ever comes up, it will be a vote of the town.
Right.
It's not gonna be some statement of, it's gonna be up in Mount Hillary.
There's, there's several options if it came to that, that the town would take. One is to become like North Bend.
Right.
Be a independent school.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the problems with that is, is the funding, or such a thing. And the funding today, which is unfortunately, I'm saying, I'm gonna let you, they're not, they don't look at independent schools the same as they do public schools because legislation is a public body. They look at public identities that go to school and so forth. Uh, but at the same time, North Bend did it, and they gave tuition to go lives to. We as taxpayers, the whole state, because what we pay for taxes in our town doesn't necessarily mean as dollars that comes to our town because it goes in a big pool. Then they pay per pupil. And in a lot of cases, we have got more money than the town they do.
Right.
But that's not, not helping me when I say that because the bottom line is education is so expensive.
Right, yeah, right.
You know, until they look at a way of reducing that, and she said.
But in, in the event that it should ever come to that, and, you know, we'd be considering that. Is there a way to get the school returned to the town?
Well.
You know, cause I know when I talk about getting into weeds, it's because they're, they're having subsequent acts. So Act 46 is getting farther in the past. And, and I know when, when the merger occurred, there was something about if they're gonna close it, they, they could offer the town the property.
Yeah, I think that's still true.
Well, it's one of the, I would say, that, that would sound some way I would say, that I would think it probably be a probability because they don't want the cost of keeping the building. They don't have any of that. But the key is, is to really, I think, is stress how important this is to them now.
What we're looking at with our, addressing the town plan is we're, we're looking, uh, we're, we're, we're looking for business to come in, some employers, and there's always, we always hear the need for workforce housing. But, you know, I, you know, I would say targeting workforce with children would be a good idea, I think.
Well, yeah. You're gonna have a lot of retired people move to a community in, in our state, unfortunately, it's going. And the young people, you can't keep, two of our grandchildren now in the state.
Yeah, look.
You don't look.
Yeah.
I was very fortunate. My kids were here all while I was here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, but those times.
Me too.
Those times are hard now to get because of the job qualities in our state. Uh, back to the school thing, I would say, setting out on the education, you know, at the time, I never heard anyone say that Act 46 was a bad thing.
Right.
I think the, the attempt in Act 46 might have been okay, but the, the mindset and how all these schools were gonna close because they're gonna offer so much better and these other things, never happened. You know, never really did. Now Act 73 is bringing its next, there's a 173, there's a 73, and each one of them is bringing a little more layer on the school. The, the trouble with our schools is, is that from the government side on down, our teachers are asked for more and more things to do with, oh, any real paid increase. Not that they're not getting paid because they are, they're just, they're not psychiatrists. They're not, a lot of the things that are being asked up. And that, I think, is, uh, it's gonna be the big thing in this state that'll come to a head someday because we just can't keep up with that without to, you know, you just keep adding the staff, you're gonna add costs. The cost needs more of a property. The goal, I think, right now, the ways to do this, they're trying to find another way to pay tax on schools other than property tax. Be fair, property tax will never go away. They'll still grab a bite. They're gonna grab a bite. But they hope when they get pieces from elsewhere. You know, there's everything from.
It's a shame.
Sales tax, loans and meals, and some of those things already go into education, but they could raise them by a percentage or something. I don't know if they're going to, but that's when you talk about tax for education, that's where that is. And I don't know how much town plans can be about that. The only way town plans can help is by building, attracting industry.
Yeah. Is anything from like the Vermont Lottery go towards in the general fund?
Yeah, goes in education.
So that goes in?
Something wanted to go in the general.
Everything has an administrative cost. So, yes, lottery goes in, but there's administrative cost in that for the run of the organization that's printing the tickets, doing the tickets, managing it and so forth. So, yes, the lion's share, I would say, goes to education, the, the other does. But, but there's, there's lots of programs in the state that bring in more money than they need, but the good years they've been taking it off the top.
Obviously, it's not enough to lower the taxes.
But education, no, it's, you know, the, the stuff that goes education goes to education. Um, I thought the bill passed and that was a bill for spraying bees and stuff for, uh, bees, honeybees and stuff. Uh, I didn't vote for that bill because the sales tax now alone was 12 million dollars to education. And nobody was making it up. I asked where they're gonna make it up. If we made it up somewhere else, I could have supported it. It's little things like that that brings money away that they don't think like, you know, when there's billions of dollars. You know, it's 12 million bucks. They, they need to think, when you think of the pennies, the rest adds up.
Right, yeah.
Curious, you, you mentioned community asset, which I really believe in, but I've had the impression recently, now that the town doesn't control it, that it's hard for community organizations to gain access to use the gym at night or to use the library or to whatever like that. So I'm curious about control and, and if there's a way we could gain better access to the, uh, asset.
No, I, I thought, I thought they still were using it. I'd have to check into that.
This is one of your, your rings still?
Um, so the one I was thinking about was one I used to be on the Friends of Pownell and they wanted to use it for their, um, you know, candidate, meet the candidates. And the costs of using it were fairly high. Um, you know, insurance, they wanted to have liability insurance and all this, and we didn't, we didn't have any money for that. So, you know, it's that kind of thing. I, it is an asset. It's got a great playground. It's got, you know, the, the pickleball court there I use. I love it, you know, and I think it'd be great to channel more people into using the facility when the students aren't there. But I haven't seen that happening and I didn't know if there was, were barriers to that or something we could work on or?
I was on board. There was never a problem. They did insist on insurance. But I got off for about 12, 18 months and I'm back on. I will double check that.
Okay. And I.
I just assumed it was still.
They used to use.
Be a candidate, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
You can still use, as far as I know, you have to email Bethany Lorge, the principal, then coordinate with her. But Dave is worried about the insurance. When we've held our baseball events there for youth baseball, like we have to have our liability insurance to cover the event.
Yeah, that's always been.
But we already, we already carry that. So usually it's not that much more for us to add a rider for something like that.
I wonder, you know, thinking broader, you know, if, if the town could have a, a policy for the citizens to use it and then would there be things that the town could use that facility for that would be worthwhile? I mean, it's, it's a great asset. It's.
It should be utilized and it should, you know, just using it proves, proves a value to the town.
Yes, well, yes. I'm glad that was a good question. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure how Act 46 protected all that.
So.
I'm not like.
I'm still a little bit foggy on what exactly unfolded because here was the town school and then the supervisor union took it over, which meant what exactly? I mean.
First of all, the supervisor union already was involved. There was no taking over by the supervisor union. It was Act 46, which basically consolidated schools to try to lower cost. Uh, Pownell's already under the Bennington Supervisory Union. They had, somebody at that level had to oversee and make sure that schools were following the instructions that are provided by the state and federal government supervisor union studio. And then, and then get managed grants and stuff for the schools to get. What happened different was, yeah, the building was owned by the town at that time, even though the school was managed by a supervisor union overseeing teachers and so forth. So it was a little different than, than looking at it as somebody taking something over. What they did is, uh, your property that belonged to the town school district at one point now became the, the supervisory union school district setup. In that sense, so what, uh, and with this act I'm gonna send in, you're gonna even more, Mr. Hooty. If they do what they're saying about creating only X amount of school districts, these boards are all gonna be reorganized differently. And it, and they might end up being like they are with the legislature. They might be having board members running that'll be based on population. So in other words, if Pownell doesn't have enough population, uh, when they divide that, whatever number of board members are gonna have for that district, you could end up luckily having enough people come out and vote and you, you'll still be on it, but you can have somebody like Bennington be representing.
Right.
You know, it's, 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 it's what you have today with reps, part of Pownell represented by a Bennington. And by Pownell.
But the building was owned by the town and now the building is owned by.
Was owned by the school.
The union. By the.
On Anthony Union.
Yeah, that's all.
The supervisor union. And so, you know, whatever money the town put into building and maintaining that building, now the asset's off our books.
The money that they put in was for education costs. So from Act 46 on, the education costs all goes to the state. The state provides it up by pupil and then they come down here and the board that she's on decides on how they're gonna spend the money when it comes to building, repair, or other building services, grounds, et cetera. So the committee.
All the upkeep and all comes from that.
So, so that's the Bennington, they're asking for stuff, uh, Pownell could be asking for stuff. And the Woodford could ask them. So, so it's a pool with it, then that can, that board makes the decision. Okay, so.
There are some expenses that are big and unusual. You know, you have to replace the whole roof or something like that. And I could imagine, you know, it's like you've got this much for this year and this much for this year, but this is a 10-year project or a 25-year project. How does that get handled?
Think of it like your highway. Yep. You think of it like, we said, the state's gonna need to pave it this year or you're on the list. It's somewhere down the way that you got you on. That's really what you're looking at is, it's not the whole state that's involved now. It's just this, uh, supervisor union, uh, well, it's her board. It's really this element.
This is over and above the allocation per pupil?
Yes.
To do those things?
Have to ask. And usually when they set up a budget, uh, in a few years, I've been there, uh, for the school, there's things that are listed like that. And then there's money that's set aside for repairs that when people vote, they're voting for that repair money as well.
Like if Pownell needs something, then the two representatives from Pownell, myself and Sandy, will go right in and say, look, this is what we need. And we may have to say it twice, but we get on the list and they repair it.
And if the furnace goes out.
Furnace, yeah.
Furnace goes out and you can't wait for a couple of years for you to get up on that list. It has to be repaired. The money's available from the state?
Especially if it's, the furnace would be an emergency.
Okay. Has any money been put into that building recently since?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, we had a budget. I'm not sure what, right now what it was, but that stayed with Pownell. So that when Act 46 came in, each town, like the Shastbury, Woodford, Bennington and Pownell, they kept that amount in their, their own budget. So we're, we still have a, a good sized amount of money that we can use, but if it's above it, then
Right.
we just go through.
Yeah.
Before we broke up, the, the ball field in North Pownell was part of the town. The school owned it because that's where the old school was. So we, as a school board, we signed it over to the town. So that was not involved.
That wasn't taken, yeah.
They didn't, they didn't need it.
Yeah, there, there, there's budget items that were carried over, that were for like repair. They had money set aside for that already in the town and saved it up. They kept. They, but they didn't get to have an entire budget of their own, but certain items within that, they were, were carried over. And once that's gone, it's gone. But I don't know how much of that's left or anything.
It was a big chunk.
But you mentioned, you know, Shastbury, Woodford, uh, you know, all these little towns around here. Other than Bennington, Pownell's probably got the largest school of all the little towns in our region, right?
We're close to Shastbury.
Where about even, I think, with Shastbury, I didn't realize that public.
It's so close.
It's always been, year in there.
Okay. All that information you found online, go to the Department of Education. You can, uh, look up schools. They have.
It's district, yeah.
And now you look at the districts, I'm assuming you have all the stuff that I talked about on there. Look up, see what, how many populations in school. How the inspections were for the school, but because that stuff that was handed to me in the legislature came from there. So, and so, and so on.
Is that school still K to six?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I said earlier, the, the motel got rid of their single people and they moved in families. So it allowed a, a lot of people to our, to our school. It's just actually, yeah, they're moving in families.
Are they?
Yeah, not, not, no, no single people. They've had some problems with them and they're just moving in families. So I know it's a bunch of kids in there that aren't coming yet.
Yeah. Well, my bottom line is not to ever see it close.
Right.
Yes.
We'll definitely be letting the people down on them so we can.
Oh, yeah.
Step up to that.
So we, we as a town would know ahead of time if they're gonna close it, but what about with restructuring? Like say they wanted to pull hypothetically, pull fifth and sixth grade out, move them into Bennington. Like, is something like that, that's perfectly within their purview though? Like, I'm just curious.
There's, we just think on a. There's this, we just think on a take, he's gonna take all those things here. And there's supposed to be a total of five community meetings, and when they talk about this redistricting, they're gonna come down, they'll talk about it.
Okay.
And it talks about redistricting, what it means to panel during that time, if those things were discussed, that's when it would be brought up and the people would get input into it.
Okay, good. I'm I'm glad to hear that there there will be public information.
Now, I'm gonna say one more thing, when they have those meetings, it might be a regional type meeting that's held in Bennington. But because, but then they hold it in every town and get it done by December, they're not gonna do it. And they're supposed to come up with at least three redistricting plans that they're gonna hand to legislature, and the legislature's gonna decide how they go and what they do, and they might even shuffle and make some of those things, who knows what the legislature do with it. But this committee will be holding those things, and I assume that again, we hold them within these districts, I say. So if, and everybody should be notified, probably in the paper, who knows how, but but I guess something I can send to you, but that's.
I I remember when, you know, just just bring bring back some old stuff, when Act forty six was being talked about and argued about. They had one of those meetings up in Bennington, I think it was. And I I got up to make some comments and had a person from Shastre tell me to sit down. So that's how, that's how that how that is.
Well, you know, you you have to uh learn how to conduct yourself when people come at you like that.
Well, I didn't, I didn't tell him to sit down.
Well, yeah, it might have been appropriate. But, you know, you're there to speak, they're supposed to allow you to speak. Sometimes you don't hear what you want to want to hear.
Yeah.
No, they're they're supposed to take all that in.
My bottom line is to save the school.
Oh, yeah.
Got over twenty five years invested.
I'm definitely here about that.
Well, the bottom line, the local school is a community access. Your high school, because education has been included on the plan, a high school in the tech center is uh is appropriately uh growing in a way that I think will help us.
Yeah.
But anything I would say in the plan is that they need to focus more on technical education. This is where it needs to go today, and we're lucky in our community because the tech center and schools are one. So people take classes and walk back and forth. Uh, but it really needs to grow in the state and the governments for growing tech centers. Uh, most of the legislature is, they wanna see a better workforce for the state. And the way you do that is fatal.
Right.
So I would urge you that when you're doing this town planning and talking, that when you talk about that school district, which is you make sure that you also include something else.
We'll we'll have more than one paragraph about the school.
Who uh who you having helped with that?
Oh, right now, we're we're talking it over and we're we're breaking up into into groups.
PCRC still helping?
They're they're still available. Oh, we haven't reached out to them.
They will be once we get the uh grant approval to. Put it out for bed and hire them on, well, hire on whoever wins the bid.
Did they uh help you with the grant?
They they're they're working on it.
Yes, no, Terras, I think it's been submitted and and.
Yeah, most towns give give those type of grants.
You gotta be very proud of them.
One other thing I'll mention um is an idea that we bounced around also is um looking at the zoning for that property and designating that as a school campus zone. Special zone, I know Bennington has created special zones for few things, and B C R C helped them do it from an article I read in the Banner, so that's what got me thinking, it's like, let's change the zone to that, to to protect that, to keep it as a school campus.
I don't know how many know the supervisor of the school.
Yeah, the new superintendent.
I think he can throw a stone and hit the school.
Oh, yeah.
I heard he lives nearby the school, but I haven't heard where.
Exactly.
But I know, like, in our discussions, our fear was, like, with the major consolidating going on, like, God forbid they close Powell and just make us bus all our kids into Bennington or however, like, in our mind, that that would be like worst case scenario.
That has to be a vote of the town.
Yeah, I don't know how concerned he is to. I'm thinking, it wouldn't be bad for you to hear from superintendent or what he thinks.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah.
It's up to him.
Yeah.
But uh I'm sure he.
You know, one other.
He can't, he can't make things happen instantly anymore than he can. But it'd be interesting to know their mindset, you know, that redistricting.
In in any number of scenarios that that could possibly come, maybe Powell could be a receiving school. As well.
Could be, you don't know.
It's a good sized school and well capped, so. It's a good environment.
It's all in how they do this redistricting.
I don't know.
This stuff, but but you're gonna see that there's a lot of towns that are in the zone of Bennington. There's also a lot across the other way, but it's not, but but there's things that are zoned in a way that, what you said, I don't see people coming from oh up near San Gate or that, you're coming this far.
Right.
Okay, not young, not when you're talking K through six. Uh, but you but you could see some of that coming down Shastre or maybe Shastre's too, coming in Bennington. Uh, and Ben, some of Bennington on the same. You know, and.
They they gotta worry about the number of kids that especially the younger kids traveling far enough.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's not gonna be good. I mean, there's a lot of things you can holler about.
Well, it's just the cases in this redistricting that they're talking about, how many kids in her classroom.
Right.
Okay, and that's one of the the things that's making hard for them to do it right now. They don't want a teacher standing in front of five kids. You know, but they, K two, six, they have a super bowl, the high school, they have a middle school different, and high school different methods. And and basically, I don't have them off my head, I shouldn't print this out, but the but the bottom line is that uh those are all guidelines by them, which based on how the redistricting goes, never know what kids could be. Whatever, but they're gonna make sure that they wanna make sure that the head count and teach counts are good.
Do they have, do they also factor in um special needs and learning disabilities and all that stuff too?
Oh, yes.
But yes, there's a, it has been about uh and there's some guidelines on that too, that's in this whole thing, so I'll try. Yeah, there's also.
Okay.
And then he applies several pages of weed. Trying to send your county area, it's entirely heads office issue, because when they show these districts they made up, they don't necessarily show the town, all the town. So when you look at one and look the other, you can see how far we transform and what's not.
Keep keep us on the mailing list for sure.
But uh but again, it was in seven days, just a little while ago, the redistricting story. Uh, they had me up in.
They have a question.
What was the question?
Well, I, first of all, I just really appreciate both your coming here, but also clearly your your commitment to what you're doing with the school board. And um you're not gonna wanna do it forever, although I'd love it if you continued for a lot of years. Um, and it just seems so critical to me that we have some good knowledgeable people from town along that school board, how do we, how do we get the next people lined up?
It's tough, I mean, people don't wanna run anymore. When I, when I got off the board, it was, I I think it was close to eighteen months that each town has two people. But when I got off, it left Sandy. And I know there was a couple of people that came to me and said, what do I, how do I get on the board, and I told them, but they were never called. And I thought, what's going on? Even when I went up to central office and said, I'm interested in coming back. And they had my question with me, they all said, are you crazy? I said, well, I'm crazy. Forty five days, and I called central office and I said, is our chair know I wanna come back? And she said, everybody knows you wanna come back. And I'm thinking, why did it take when they only had one, which is wrong?
Right, right.
I don't know, people today don't, I don't care what committee you're on, it's hard to get people to.
And there's a process that they call three. I received something from the Democratic Committee of the Town, there was nobody middle school. And Sandy was serving with her there, her and so both of us got appointed, but again, we're both retired. And then, like you said, where's the younger generation?
Busy out here.
They don't care.
Well, and the trouble is, you gotta give up. One day a month, some special committee or something, day a month, two days a month. But uh.
I don't think people realize what what what's involved in being on the board.
There's a lot of.
Little commitment, but it's not something that's gonna kill you.
Right.
You know, so.
Well, sometimes you have one vote makes a difference.
A little passion helps, though.
There's actually quite a few of us that are older on that, or my older.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's no young people.
So it's just not, uh, there's other towns that are.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I just.
It's it's it's.
I've seen that it's been hard to get people for some of these seats, and I just.
Happened is, again, go back to community school, it's a community school, people wanna be involved, it's just the community. It sort of fuels community now, but it's not the same.
That's it.
You know, and it makes it a lot harder for people to feel that they they're up there and, you know, I don't know. I haven't come, someone up there, but there's gotta be none.
At least.
And basically, uh, you're one voice. And you, you can be loud if you, people could tell you. You know, there's there's all kinds of things, but but you have to be fixed in and do your homework. If you come back, you wanna have the answer.
Yeah.
You don't wanna say, well, I'll get that and I'll get back to you. It's, you wanna be a little bit prepared, and then sometimes you won't be surprised, and you won't be prepared, that's when you say, I wanna read up on that before I move.
Right.
And we appreciate you guys.
Yeah.
For what you're doing, that's important.
I started out on the planning commission.
Yes, yeah, you did.
Back in nineteen seventy two or three.
Oh, really? To the area.
And I went to the map design administration.
Women, like women for.
I was on a voice uh civil authority back then, D R B now, but I think board civil authority and then I went to select.
President.
People are.
A journey.
That people don't know how hard they really have to work.
Yeah, yeah.
We we hope that we helped you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and if you think of anything.
Got a lot of books, thank you.
When we started putting together something, we're we're gonna, we're gonna expand the narrative about the school system in in the town plan, so we'll bounce it off you, we'll let we'll let you have it. And if you see anything that we should do.
And I think Nelson and Cindy had a great idea inviting the new supervisor down.
Yep.
But even if we could just forward them some questions and just get like us something from them.
Hey, kind of.
I believe Dave just said we're drunk.
Well, it's might be, you say you're talking about the B C R C because they they're deeply involved, because whenever you write for a plan, they gotta approve it.
Right.
And that's when you're gonna steam the touches.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because they they hit guidelines that they're supposed to follow and you have to meet.
Right.
Recorder by the.
They do a regional.
But they can either be made lawyer or they can be made heavy.
Yeah.
And you wanna see how it affects you, whether it's lawyer or heavy. I remember going around and getting them in. I must have been on a planning board that having the first town planning. We stand by with a regional approval. But, you know, panel, just like the school, you need to uh.
Yeah, for the current town, and I was involved from both sides of the table. Um, it it's quite a process, I know that for sure. My observation, it seemed like the B C R C did did a lot of lifting. And, you know, that's why, you know, I I kinda wanted to see what we get together on our own first, get our, get our ideas all figured out, and then turn it over to them. For sure. This kind of, you know, it's it's been a good informational meeting, if you're glad, glad you guys came in.
Very good. Just say we'll definitely keep you informed and.
Yeah, just reach out to us.
I assume that the B C R C is major aware of the empty fifty changes.
Yeah, 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 we're looking at that. Yeah, we are.
That makes a big difference when you talk about building in your town now.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's certain areas where you don't have, that you won't have to go through what you used to do.
Right.
Six neighbors standing up in. When everything goes stop.
Yeah.
If you go further into it than that, then you can decide whether or not it's a yes or no.
Right, yeah.
If there's, and it'll be the town deciding.
Uh, as as we are with that right now, we we uh recommend it to the select board that we don't opt in on on that at this point. Well, we have two two tiers.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, within B B one. It was one where where if the town took on some of the administrative load, that it could make the process quicker for people who were doing things, but the number of situations where that would apply was really limited, and we were concerned about what we'd be taking on, and and so we didn't see a lot of value to going that way.
The only way you could do that is, again, we could get B C R C, you make them handle the administrative side. They're paying them a dues every year to provide.
Well, one one part of their act was Act one eighty one or something like that, or or tier one A. Mentioned four story buildings and stuff like that, so it's not power.
T, you have to remember that Powell's made up of these four villages. East. East is fire, I mean.
Yeah.
You're not gonna do much there.
Yeah.
But uh, Powell village itself has water.
Right.
You could have a four story.
Yeah.
You got three stories, never have now.
Yeah.
You think of four story, but it's really not.
We just don't have a purpose for a four story.
Well, somebody might wanna put their garages underneath. You know, there's plenty of areas, we can't do anything, I should put a garage under that house on Powell.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And and then falls with the act admitting process.
Right.
Do you don't think that uh our town up to the north there tires, house, again, isn't thinking of things like that?
Oh, yeah.
Through the middle of the town.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And they're trying to build things.
Oh, yeah.
And and that's, and I know they know how this works.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, no, it it's utilizing the resources you have to make things happen is sometimes the hardest thing to do.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But it can be done.
Yes.
Whether it takes over, when it was town, it's it's, you know, that's a lot of issues, but uh, I always say, you can come over here and do it easy, and you can win it. I always say, you can come over here and do it easy and you can win it.
You're coming.
They're coming.
No, I, uh. I think, uh, has a lot of opportunities still, you know.
One thing they've got is a nice post office. Williams Town loves. Our post office. That's an attraction that's really big in this town. Cause they don't wanna go to it's face.
I owe you too.
Why was it two-way street at one time?
Oh yeah. About ten years ago, they made it one way or way. I can't remember.
Seventy-one was it?
Seventy-nine.
No, we can't.
Don't argue with your wife, Nelson. You're gonna lose.
No, but basically, no, I just look at it as. You know, we didn't fit well in Williams Town.
Right. It's a different community for sure. I've lived in both.
Yep, I hear you too.
If they do, it's Nelson. You don't have to be ashamed of that.
I thought Williams Town was a nice town. They do, but I noticed towns. Just think they could treat their people better.
Were very generous to us with the, all that.
The skate department, yeah, that was.
So I appreciate you guys coming in and.
Very much.
Like keep, keep us in the loop and we'll, we'll reach out to you again if something comes to mind or something up and. We'll keep, we'll keep you up, up to, up to date with what we're.
Open communication.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Very informative. Appreciate it.
Thank you, buddy.
Yes, Eddie, it's fine.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Thank you very much.
I'll be there.
Then I'll just clear.
Yeah, she wasn't waiting for you, Nelson. If you're lucky, she won't start the car and leave without you. Oh, smart man.
Hey.
I'm supposed to take her out.
Cody's, Cody's pretty good.
That is absolutely true. Well, thank you for coming, Nelson.
Yeah.
Enjoy dinner.
So. Next item is agenda items for our next meeting.
Uh, I would like to see, um, for the next meeting, being that we've had a few issues with, uh, Zoom meetings and. Less than desirable input. And I'll say. Uh, this is now happened a few times, a couple of different boards. I think that might warrant a discussion. Or at least some guidance from the select board.
I would just amend that to say, it seems like we should find out who gets to make that decision.
Yes.
Talk to them. As well, we kinda need that because we can't.
Right, yeah.
Do it on our own.
Yeah. Uh, maybe review what we're. Our progress on some of the writing. Oh yeah, and we're share, share some of what we've been playing around with.
Seems like, at least from my point of view, I don't like to get something and try to read through it and figure something out at the table.
Right.
If we could get sent stuff a few days before. So we could read through it and mark it up and say, I like this, I don't like this, whatever, then we could have a discussion that would.
So how do we go about sharing this? We send it to Katie?
So whenever you have it, I can compile it and then send it down.
So. Uh, if we could send her stuff, what, by the. Within a week, then, then she can send it to us, you know, at least three or four days ahead or something like that.
I can send out some of you guys a reminder email to in a couple of days, just say, hey.
Yeah.
Send me your town plan updates.
Anything else? So how about public topic?
Good question too. Tom's over, seven street. So I'm on the conservation commission and finally getting our act together a little bit, had a lot of turnover, but.
It's a big one, a forty thousand dollar grant today.
The chair, he's, he's a filmmaker. But one of the things we decided is we should really try to keep up with what some of the other commissions are doing. So I volunteered, um, just to try to keep up with the planning commission. And, um, you know, I think that there's things that if, if we can help you in any way. But I think just us knowing what you're doing is helpful for us. Um, I've been trying to read through some of the inspiring minutes, even thank you for all the work you've been doing on. The Act two fifty, you know, exemption, discussion, that schools and. Uh, especially the sewage, uh, part of the capacity, that's really helpful. One question I had here was like, it seems like we have plenty of capacity, um. Which is great, you know, for trying to attract business homes, but we already have that. Is there anything else we could do to, um. I mean. Tracks, uh, businesses, homes to the, the, this, the designated areas. Is that it?
Boy, we're working on it.
We're working on it, yeah.
I, you know, been working on it since nineteen sixty-three.
That's the thing, we don't have the power to.
Yeah.
Grab somebody and say, hey, come. I think that, you know, if there, if we identified some real holes in the community in terms of. You know, things that would really enhance the town, like B C R C sort of talked about some of the things that we could do with the center there.
Yeah.
Uh, we could publicize that and hope somebody came.
Yeah.
I don't know what else we could do.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's sort of what we're thinking with this, um. David mentioned that we got this grant to forty thousand dollars just to take the next baby step on what can we do. Town hall center to make it more attractive. You know, should we think about in the stretch of Route seven, that class one, so the town would kinda control it. Um, and use the minimum.
We didn't lie and talk about, about the second system. Through this area, but we recently. Come around to, to the reality that water is an issue in this area.
Water is a nature.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause everybody's private well up through here and. Like just the thought of trying to put a municipal system and like the, the cost to the potential benefits, like.
Absolutely.
I think we had a pretty unanimous, um, consensus about wanting to get across walks. Make sure the kids can get across the street safely and things like that.
Yeah.
Um, so there were some elements of the B C R F C plan, which we did discuss.
Yeah.
Early in my tenure here that made total sense to us. Some of them not as much, but that's part of what the scoping study, I think, is supposed to help us learn.
In general, did you see any benefit to slow on traffic to here? Okay, cause that's one of the things we want to spill in studying. I don't even know if we're eligible to do something like that or how we've done, you know, it's not easy to deal with state.
And we also talked about bike lanes.
Bike lanes, yeah, sure. Um, well, that's good. So at least we're sort of thinking.
Yeah.
All in the same lines and I'm glad you mentioned the, the water because I was wondering, okay, we're trying to attract people, but at the same time. People's wells are going dry across the streets.
Another one, the water district that we have, that's, that's really not the town, it's not. It's, it's a, those people form the district, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's technically like a municipal fire district. That's where we got the money.
Yeah. We need something like that up here. Somebody's got a good, good source of water enough to.
We've got the water.
Right.
Yeah, the big white area that might have been a good candidate is contaminated.
Maybe we need to build a town water tower. We have gravity seed.
Well, it's the. I mean, we could absolutely ask the select board if they wanna investigate that and do a feasibility study, but I think the cost of that.
Yeah. We'll find insurance first and then.
Well, and yeah, and it's, it's, it's a chicken and egg thing too, because you need that in order to attract the business.
Exactly.
The businesses in order to be able to afford to pay for it.
Absolutely.
So it's kind of a hard challenge.
It's a hard town. It, it's, we got lucky down below because of polluting the river. That's why a lot of, there was a lot of straight pipes. I know that, you know, and, and they got rid of them and. Luckily, uh, we were fortunate to get watered out. That's it.
Was the same reason we got the sewer system because the house.
That's right.
Directly into the river.
It's exactly what happened.
We must have gotten a lot of grants to do.
We got a lot of grants. We had good people, Charlie Palmer and those guys did a good job for getting, you know, money. We owe a lot of money though, you know, I mean, whatever. But it's well worth it.
Yeah.
You know, well, you had the Mary Lewis system, which was terrible. I mean, Mary Lewis had a little system.
Oh yeah.
Still get iron in the ground that bothers other people trying to find, you know, what's going on, but.
What, what brook is that? What's the name of that brook?
The Ladbrook? Is, is, was it the Ladbrook? The Ladbrook? Yeah, the other north.
It comes north of the cemetery.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's where it's at.
Yeah.
Up in the hill and it's up there today.
Yeah.
You know? The water system, it pumps up. And gravity feeds down. Lots of water.
Yeah.
Lots of water. And there's lots of water at the racetrack and there is down the state line, which goes to North Adams for some reason. There's people working on that, but they're, you know, it's a process.
Cause I remember they did look into the one on the Strobridge property, but uranium count was too high. Radiation.
Didn't there used to be a, like a source of water for Williams Town right up on that hill here that, that fed down to Williams Town?
Top of White Oaks. That's down by state line, right?
Well, the White, White Ostis and, and maybe, you know, in, in Williams Town more or less.
Right, it continues.
There's a piece up in there, mostly owned by the, uh.
Still in use.
I, I could be wrong, but I don't think it is.
No, I don't think they get any water.
Other question I had, and this is just me being ignorant, is, I mean, okay, so we can whatever we tend to track, but there, is there anything we can do as a town? To discourage, like, we keep hearing of people moving in and people moving in, but mostly they want, you know, a piece of fifteen acres. You know, way.
Yeah.
And that's fine, that's a choice, but if we're, is there anything we could sort of make it less attractive to do that? And come and build a house, you know, in a village, one of the three villages or.
They like the land and you know.
Is that enough of the town?
No, just somebody. Part of the state regulations that they're changing or making it harder to subdivide larger portions. Help try to prevent that. So the state is concerned about that. So they want. More growth in town center, but. So that's part of the whole allowing towns to opt in the Act, well, Act. One.
One eighty-one.
One eighty-one, whatever it is, basically giving a little bit more local control. To essentially bypass some of the Act two fifty regulations for, uh, more like cluster housing and multi-unit housing.
But you know, the thing is, my problem is, we don't have much, but we have room.
Yeah.
You know, and you, you like elbow room. Everybody likes, and people that.
Yeah.
Have, have an acre land, don't wanna split it up and have somebody else living on there.
Right, right on there.
Yeah, they, 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 they like come here for the land and, you know.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I don't wanna see like a two hundred and fifty acre farm parcel get pieced out and have, you know. Eighty-five McMansions all wedged in on top of each other. I, I think that ruins, I mean, the population growth is great.
Yeah.
The tax base is great, but I think it just ruins the character.
Water may be an issue.
Yeah.
The, the town center and, and all this work they're doing to maybe help focus construction on the town center. Those are gonna be more moderate income properties.
Sure.
And you know, that's maybe if we had a few more stores and so forth, it's a walking district and that's a plus. And then there's a bus stop there and that's a plus. But for the people who are buying fifteen acres and putting up their mansion, they're not gonna money.
So that's what they want is.
And it's, you know, it is increasing our tax base.
Yeah, this village here, I think, is the best, the best walking community.
Yeah.
That's where the money's at.
Have a coffee shop, you know.
The river, rivers. They don't have, you don't have as much of, any more hills and stuff like that, so it's less of a walkable entity.
Yeah.
Village.
So just a funny story, we were on our front porch. Guy pulls up with jersey plates. This is, I think, last summer, you know, like a, a large, um, suburban park. Well, he, he comes down, he goes, um, we're looking for downtown panels? Turns out he was staying at the Williams Town Inn and I guess he asked them, would you like to walk? Um, where could we walk? And I think thought they meant hike. That they, you know, said, we'll check out panels, but they were looking for like a big downtown area with shops.
In Williams Town, they got, yeah.
Yeah.
And they got the nice trail over there they built.
Yeah.
It's just great, yeah, yeah.
Anyway, okay, well, thanks. And oh, I meant to mention, so we're gonna try to keep the fundraising thing going. Um, the idea would be ultimately if there's people, like a person on each of the commissions. We would form like some informal kind of group, get it approved by the select board, that would work on. You know, more grants, maybe even more private fundraising, uh, not just always applying for grants, but there are people who do have some, um. Money around here, you know, tap a little bit of that, um.
I've tapped a lot of it.
But we were thinking, you know.
Should be on the committee.
Even this grant that we got for this film study has an eight thousand dollar matching, so we're gonna try to get a GoFundMe or something where. The towns are not gonna kick that in, we're gonna find people to kick that in, like, keep that going. Uh, we'll see.
People in town are generous, really, and, and a lot of them are dead. Well, they are. They, they put the money up and done it.
I really appreciate it.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thanks. It's pretty exciting.
Anybody else?
Nobody online.
Nobody?
Nobody.
Amazing.
I motion to adjourn.
All favor?